Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. If you please remain standing if you choose, join me for the Lord's prayer. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name, thy kingdom come, thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us to stay our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. And lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. Thank you.
Good morning. Our next public workshop will be next Tuesday, June 4th at ten thirty a.m. Our next regular meeting will be Wednesday, June 5th at ten thirty a.m., both in this room here. Madam Clerk.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Here.
Ms. Frenchco.
Here.
Mr. Malloy.
Here.
Item number one is to dispense with reading the minutes of the workshop session dated May twenty first, two thousand and twenty four, and the regular meeting dated May twenty second, two thousand and twenty four, and accept and approve the video recordings of both meetings as the official meeting minutes.
Motion approved.
Second.
Discussion. I've noticed that the meeting minutes, if you're recording them and you're going to use a recording as the official record, people have to announce their name before they speak in order for those minutes to count, and they also have to be transcribed. And there should be no skipping. And if you go back and look at every single meeting, there's at least one instance where the the videos skip and the transcriptions don't say the names of the individuals talking. And there are a lot of errors with the transcriptions because the county seems to be relying on YouTube transcriptions, and that's not correct. And I just wanted to bring that about publicly because we are in court over that matter, and I would prefer it if the board would just automatically correct this prior to moving forward so that you could say, hey, we're doing it the right way whenever you get to a hearing. Because they're not, they're not correct according to statute.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
No.
Item number two is to approve the bills.
Motion approved.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number three is to adopt a resolution approving the attached list labeled as then and now commissioners dash April two thousand and twenty four of purchase orders to the various vendors as then and now purchase orders in compliance with O R C five seven zero five point four one D.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number four is to transfer monies.
Motion approved.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number five is to approve additional appropriations.
Motion approved.
Second the motion.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number six is to approve transfer of appropriations.
Motion approved.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number seven is to concur with the Trumbull County engineer to grant the special hauling permit to move overweight equipment requested by the company listed, and that company is Transport National LLC.
Motion approved.
Second the motion.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number eight is to concur with the county engineer to grant the special hauling permits to haul steel coils requested by the companies listed. J. Row Transportation Services, Inc., and P I N I Motor Express.
Motion approved.
Second.
And for discussion. For this item, one of them was not forwarded to the commissioners. We have a new system in place to make the lives easy, life easier for the clerk. They don't have to write the agenda. They just plop the things from the website into the agenda, or I'm sorry, from the emails into the agenda. And one of these didn't come to us, and I just want to make sure that the clerk is making sure that things are working. We had, I believe there were three of them that were not.
We're still working a few bugs out.
Okay, it's, hang on, you know, you're not part of the meeting.
I am.
We're not going in this direction with you today.
I am part of the meeting.
We are, so.
But I am.
As you were clerk.
Continue. Talk to the chairman, not the clerk.
So. There were. What did she just say?
No, you're so predictable. So predictable.
On, Nikki, move on. Everyone knows your game. Move on with this.
Okay, so there are three items that we didn't receive, and whether or not they're kings or not, if you are aware, and the clerk was aware that the commissioners didn't receive these things based on correspondence that I saw from Steve Gerberry today, she should have made sure that she forwarded them to the commissioners minimally, and that didn't occur.
These are permits, and you could have called Steve Gerberry yourself and gotten them. That's what a normal commissioner would do.
I agree.
Clerks are supposed to, they.
I'm not supposed to fetch things for you.
Clerks work for the Board of Commissioners to make sure the agendas are done and to give us the information that we need. And if she, at the point in time when she realized that.
We are working with a limited staff. Thanks to you, we're working with a very skeletal staff.
This is, this is ridiculous.
No, it's just your. No, it's not.
It is.
The three of us make three hundred thousand dollars to do her job. A clerk makes less than fifty, and you're gonna sit here and put all your work on her? On the, on the average clerk? It's not gonna happen. Let's move forward.
Statutory.
Move forward.
The duty of the.
Item number eight.
No, what are you?
Call the question, please. Call the question.
Call the question.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes, but I want to reiterate that the clerk did not provide the.
Item number nine is to concur. To grant the.
Do that, Lisa.
Requested by the property.
I don't know who the hell you think you are.
Motion.
She thinks she's.
I'll second the motion.
No, and we're gonna have discussions. This woman thinks that.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
No.
Yeah.
No.
Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Discussion.
Yes or no?
Discuss the item. Discuss the agenda item. You can discuss, but you're gonna discuss the agenda item.
That is not acceptable. Her conduct should, she should be terminated. In a real world situation, a person who's conducting themselves like this would be terminated.
Commissioner, I want to remind you, you were terminated by the public.
Thank you. My sentence exactly.
I get calls on a regular basis from employees who are disgusted at her conduct and the disrespect that she has for me and my position. This is unacceptable. It sends an awful, awful.
Commissioner, I want to remind you, that is your employee. That is your employee. You talk down to this employee, you belittle this employee, you've called her the worst of the worst words on social media, and in any world, and in any employment thing, that would not be tolerated.
This is not okay for an employee to complete, to be insubordinate like this, to completely refuse to provide information to her executives for the purpose of making.
She didn't refuse anything. There's something overlooked in the system, and like she said, if you found out it was overlooked, did you tell us? Did you spread it? Did you make a copy? Did you make it right? A good commissioner would do what they can to make it right.
We didn't know. We didn't know. She knew.
Right thing to do would have been to just call Steve Gerberry and confirm whatever inquiry you had, and you didn't do that. You never do.
Shut your mouth.
Don't tell me to shut.
The long.
Tell me to shut my mouth.
Commissioner, I want to remind you that you're under censure, and anything coming out of your mouth right now is not a reflection of the board commissioner.
And look, go and look at any other, I encourage you, the board and everyone, to go and look at other commissioners' meetings throughout the state of Ohio. The clerks do not speak. They don't participate in the discussion.
And the commissioners are respectful to the clerk.
Inappropriate.
The commissioners are respectful to the clerk.
And the commissioners receive everything that they need.
Oh, you know.
This is.
So predictable. What is your vote for item number nine? Yes, no, or abstain?
You're awful.
Okay, I'll move on then if you'd like, commissioners, to not, to number ten.
Yes, please.
So on number, on, on number nine, the first one, Windstream Western Reserve wasn't given to the commissioners.
It was given to you.
We have a new.
It was given to you.
We have a new, you're interrupting.
It was given to you. Quit lying.
Yes, no, or abstain, Commissioner. The discussion ends over.
No, prior to yesterday, I had to inquire with her because she did not provide us this information.
The right of.
Okay, and you inquired, you got your answer, right? So move on.
Her conduct is so unacceptable.
Let's move on, please. Let's move on.
If you, I don't know.
Yes, no, or abstain. Item number nine, this is the last time I'm asking you. Okay.
I can't wait to read your whole investigation over at the.
To concur with the Trumbull County engineer to grant the special hauling permit to move oversized equipment. Requested by the company listed, and this is Transport National LLC.
Motion approved.
Second that.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number eleven is to concur with the county engineer to close the roadway as listed. Trumbull Avenue, County Highway forty in Liberty Township between Atlanta Avenue and State Route one ninety-three Belmont Avenue for culvert replacement. The closing date is Monday, June third, two thousand and twenty four, through Friday, June fourteenth, two thousand and twenty four.
Motion approved.
Second that.
On discussion, this is another one that we, we didn't receive, and the appropriate thing to do once the clerk realized that the commissioners didn't receive it would be to forward it via email. That is appropriate. Didn't happen.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number twelve is to adopt a resolution authorizing expenditure for responding to or mitigating the public health emergency from American Rescue Plan Act funds, ARPA, and this is for Gus Davis Township Park. And on the next page, this is for a one-time grant to Gus Davis Township in the amount of one hundred thirty-five thousand, nine hundred ninety-nine dollars to be used for the installation of a playground within the township park.
Motion approved.
Second the motion.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number thirteen is to enter into an agreement between the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners and Gus Davis Township as approved by ARPA Legal Counsel to provide funds for the township for the installation of playground within the township park as described in Exhibit A, and the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners allocate the sum of one hundred thirty-five thousand, nine hundred ninety-nine dollars to the township.
Motion approved.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number fourteen is to rescind the journal action dated March twenty seventh, two thousand and twenty four, authorizing the retention of the li- list of law firms to represent the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners in a class action lawsuit regarding P E R and polyfluoroalkyl substances, P F A S, in drinking water. The proposed legal agreement was not executed, and those law firms are Brennan, Manah, and Diamond, Barron and Budd, P C, Cosich, Sumich, Parsiola, and Taylor LLC, McNamy and McNamy LLP, Othsheizer, Miller, Waggond, and Clag LLC.
Motion to rescind. The journal action is stated.
Second that.
And discussion. This is a throwback Thursday, okay? So if you guys recall, I voted no on this, and the reason I voted no on this is because the contract, and I was the only one who read it, said that the Board of Commissioners were waiving any conflict of interest that occurred with that legal counsel and the rest of its clients. Denny vehemently argued with me and said something about M V S D and accused me of things when my, my primary concern was the Board of Commissioners waiving the conflict of interest for Trumbull County. And now it's come out, maybe, maybe the, that that's the reason.
No, maybe. You're guessing. You don't know that's the reason.
No, maybe about it.
No, the reason is these attorneys didn't do their job. They didn't, they didn't file the stuff they were supposed to. So we're firing those attorneys and hiring a new group.
We didn't, do you make, hang on a second, for clarification, because unfortunately, sometimes people believe what comes out of the mouths of a commissioner, even if they have no idea what they're saying. Yesterday, you can go back and, yesterday, you can go back and listen to the meeting, the workshop, and it, on no uncertain terms, and look at the previous one. Denny just got done saying we fired them. You cannot fire someone who you haven't even signed a contract with. So there was no contract, and Bill Danzo himself yesterday said that there is a conflict of interest there is, is, is one of the reasons, is the reason for the, for this. So our prosecutor's office underscored the fact that there was a conflict of interest and went with new counsel. So I just wanted to remind the board, and Denny, you could say what you want. You can't rewrite history. I brought this up whenever this originally came on. I voted no because of the conflict of interest. You argued with me. We didn't hire them. There was no contract signed, so please make sure that what you're saying is accurate.
What are we rescinding? Nothing?
You're rescinding the journal action. Please, just read and try to understand. You're rescinding the journal.
Authorizing hiring them, authorizing retaining them.
Was there, there was no contract. Keep reading, honey. There was no contract signed.
The legal agreement wasn't executed. They didn't do their job on, on both ends of the.
No, no, they, there weren't, there's no one to fire if you never entered an agreement. I feel so bad that you're. It's not semantics. Either they were, either we were their clients and we fired them, or we didn't hire them in the first place. We didn't hire them in the first place. Please read the items before you say things that are conflicting with what they are. Just a nice little.
Do you feel, you feel better now? Did you get it out of your system?
Maybe you guys should actually listen to the bright bulb on the board, you know, because this would have been prevented had you listened to me back when I brought this up, so.
I respectfully disagree.
Of course.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number fifteen is to authorize the retention of the law firm of Staglusa LLC to represent the, the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners in a class action lawsuit regarding P E R and polyfluoroalkyl substances, P F A S, in drinking water, and to authorize Danny Malloy, President of the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners, to execute a legal services agreement on behalf of Trumbull County.
Motion approved.
Second.
Is there anyone who? Here. Scott, are you able to talk about the origin of those? If you can, that's okay, because it's one of them.
I'm not that familiar with it. I know it's, but other than that, it's a legal matter, and I'd rather defer.
Name and who you represent.
I'm sorry. Scott Burner, Trumbull County Sanitary Engineers Office. In general, this is a legal matter, and I'd just rather defer any of this to the prosecutor's office.
Talking about the P F A S and how it comes into our water.
With little I know about it, it comes into the source drinking water, the people actually distribute water, the water providers who have water treatment plants, but it does enter our distribution system, so.
Those are the plastics, correct?
Yes.
Largely the little, the pods that we use for laundry detergent and dishwashing.
Any form of plastic is worth.
Yeah, and they dissolve, and then they get back into the system. So after seeing and reading as much as I have, which is limited about that, you know, it, I think it's important to people who care about their drinking water, consider or start using powders, making their own detergents, using liquids, not using those little plastics, because obviously it's a problem, and it's gonna be a problem in the future and for years to come. So I just wanted to see if, if you had the same understanding that I had about it.
Somewhat, yes, but, okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number sixteen is to authorize Danny Malloy, President of the Board of Commissioners, to execute on behalf of Trumbull County the subgrant award agreement, subgrant number two thousand and twenty-three, D L L E F fifty-eight hundred for the Tag Law Enforcement Task Force. The grant is effective for the period of July first, two thousand and twenty-four, through June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-five. Total funding for the Drug Law Enforcement Fund Grant through the Ohio Office of Criminal Justice Services is in the amount of one hundred twenty thousand, eight hundred ninety dollars and nine cents. The Office of Criminal, Criminal Justice will fund seventy-five percent, or ninety thousand, six hundred sixty-five dollars and fifty-nine cents, and the local mat, cash match required is twenty-five percent, or thirty thousand, two hundred twenty-four dollars and fifty cents. And then the note, at such time as Trumbull County does not receive funding for this grant from the Ohio Office of Criminal Justice Services, the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners has no obligation to fund this program.
Motion approved.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes, and I just wanted to say that they did a nice job at getting the information to us as soon as they received it, so that the grant could be signed, or the agreement could be signed more quickly, and close to the time that it was awarded. Sometimes in the county, we see things sitting for months, and then we're signing something that took effect previously. And I like it whenever our department heads and other elected officials are on the ball, so. Yes.
Item number seventeen is to approve the personnel action for the transfer of Mr. Anthony Krokowski from the position of deputy dog warden at eighteen eighty-eight per hour to the position of clerical specialist, pay range five, nineteen ninety per hour, with the Trumbull County Dog Kennel, effective Monday, June third, two thousand and twenty-four.
Motion approved.
Second.
Mr. Cantala Mesa.
Discussion. Does anyone receive any paperwork about this one? Because this is another one that I got absolutely nothing in our, in our portal for the agenda.
The dog warden was here yesterday, and she answered any questions that we had regarding it. It was the union position. She interviewed two and picked the best one.
She said, but in order to get something on the agenda, we have a policy and a procedure where they give things to the clerk the week in advance, and then we're supposed to receive that, and nothing came through.
Yes, there was an issue with this one. It was actually submitted twice.
Okay, it wasn't forwarded to the commissioners, and on top of that, there, we, I didn't, obviously, I didn't see anything, and even yesterday, she didn't provide the.
Sometimes you have to use a better keyword than approved. You need to maybe put the person's name in.
Discussion. Be quiet.
No, it's a discussion. It's a discussion.
You said discussion.
The, okay, please understand the discussion.
I'm trying to explain it to you.
Involves the Board of Commissioners, not anyone outside of the elected body.
Okay, you're just supposed to, just sit there and berate me, okay?
So as I was saying, we didn't receive this, and the other thing that we should be looking at is not just having a conversation and letting them say, hey, we did this, this, and this. We're the executive body. We should be looking and verifying who applied, how were they ranked, and that's something that we customarily get. I don't know why we didn't receive it for this item, but I will, I just wanted to bring that up, that we received nothing. The Board of Commissioners.
That's not true.
Had nothing given to us about this, except for the verbal, which was.
It was emailed to you.
It was.
It was, actually.
So, Mr. Cantala Mesa, you voted yes. Mr. Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Abstain because I haven't received what I need in order to make a decision on this.
Item number eighteen is to amend agenda items number twenty-three and twenty-four as approved by the Board of Commissioners on May twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-four to accept and award the prop. To accept and award the proposal and bid as listed for the ARPA Mark's Tower Project located in Brookfield Township. Amendment is necessary to correct the fund number for both vendors. And the vendors are Motorola Solutions Inc. for all hardware, software, and services in the amount of five hundred thousand, two hundred ninety-six dollars. And Thermabond Buildings LLC, and that's for the Mark's Tower Shelter Project in the amount of one hundred ninety-three thousand, nine hundred and fifty dollars.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mister Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mister Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number nineteen is pursuant to Ohio Revised Code, Section five-five-three-five-point-zero-eight-A to approve an agreement by and between the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners and Braceville Township Trustees necessary for emergency repairs to Benedict Leavitsburg Road in Braceville Township where actual physical disaster has occurred to the road due to road slippage and progressive encroachment into the Mahoning River in an approximate amount of two hundred eighty-five thousand, one hundred dollars. And then I'll read the note, on May twenty-second, twenty twenty-four, the Board of Trumbull County Commissioners declared that a state of emergency exists with respect to road slippage, progressive encroachment on Benedict Leavitsburg Road in Braceville Township. And on May twenty-first, twenty twenty-four, the Braceville Township Trustees passed a resolution for declaration of emergency under O R C three-one-five-point-one-three for road slippage on Benedict Leavitsburg Road.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mister Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mister Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Item number twenty is to award the contract as submitted by Jet Excavating Company for emergency repairs to Benedict Leavitsburg Road in Braceville Township in an amount not to exceed two hundred eighty-five thousand, one hundred dollars. Uh, no county funds are required. Ninety percent of costs will be paid by the OPWC and ten percent will be paid by Braceville Township, both paying directly to Jet Excavating. Braceville Township will be responsible for all costs exceeding two hundred eighty-five thousand, one hundred dollars.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mister Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mister Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.
Okay, that concludes our regularly scheduled business for today. Does anybody have anything for the good of Trumbull County?
There's something that I wanted to mention. Um, I think the board would agree with this. I dealt, I talked to maintenance to make sure that they could, um, that they were on board with this as well. Uh, we, we have, uh, in Trumbull County, we have a psychiatric, it's a P R T, psychiatric residential treatment facility, um, for, uh, children. And it is only the second in the state of Ohio. Um, it's the only one that handles kids of uh, this age group, six to twelve, and they use resiliency treatment and trauma-informed um, methods for treating the children. It's, it's hopefully something, a model that's going to be moved across the state of Ohio. After they see how successful it is, because it's, it, it costs less money, and it, the outcome based on interviews with the families and client satisfaction, that's actually better than any other type of care. And there, the, the children actually live at a property that's owned by the Board of Commissioners on the campus of the, uh, Children's Services. And the problem there is that there's no generator, and with children of that level of care, the, the wi- the windows don't go up and down, and if there's ever any situation where they lose power or or heat or cooling, there would be an, an emergency situation because it's inpatient, one person, one person there. They, they live there for up to six months, and the same, and then after looking into it, I found that even at our residential units at the Children's Services, uh, those do not have generators either. So it would probably be more efficient to do a generator to cover that entire campus if possible as opposed to just one building and the other. Um, but at any rate, I just wanted to make sure that the board was aware of that and that there are kids living places in residential centers where there are that the Board of Commissioners own, and there is no backup generator. So I, I, I assume that you guys would agree that we needed to do that, and I already talked to maintenance about it, um, to Brian, and then he brought it up to, uh, Bill, and he is looking into it.
Yeah, Bill, Bill brought it up to me yesterday. We'll discuss it at the workshop next Tuesday. He's gonna do a site visit. He talked to Marilyn out there, and it makes sense. If we're gonna do it for the one wing, you do it for all the kids and not just the, um, disabled children that are there. So looking at potentially with the size of the place, it may be two generators.
Not, that's not appropriate language. I'm sorry. Pardon? Do you, do you prevent for that language about children?
I just want to move on. Yeah.
Yeah.
Anybody else have anything for the good of Trumbull County? Everybody on the phone?
Oh, there's, there's another thing that I want to bring up now, just kind of as a, as a heads up for the Board of Commissioners, and I hope to have some discussion with um, Morrow about it.
Yes.
We have, um, we have you, you guys, we're all in court over a particular matter, which is the, um, open records that the, the record destruction and the open meetings violations, and those are in court across the street. Um, there will be a contempt motion filed soon in which sanctions are being requested from, uh, the, a member of the board personally for violating an order. I, um, talk, I'm bringing this up to you, Morrow, because you didn't engage in the discussion, and you're supposed to be protecting the Board of Commissioners. Not one individual who's doing something out of line that causes.
I have no idea what you're talking about.
So you, we, the Board of Commissioners hired Brody Conover to represent you in a case across the street. One individual of the board violated, uh, uh, is in contempt of court, and
Who's in contempt?
That would be Malloy for discussing, discussing something that occurred in confidence, outside of a court order. So what I'm saying is, when he gets that, when he has to have legal counsel, Trumbull County taxpayers should not be paying for his matter, and there would be a conflict of interest for Brody. I hope you're following this.
It is, there's no court order, there's no gag order, there's no anything over there. You're talking again like you're playing a lawyer on TV and you're not. Do your action, do whatever you gotta do. You're gonna keep suing everybody in the county until you're gone. You're not gonna be happy until you bankrupt the county. And you look and say, look what I did. I burned the county down as I left.
He, he will have to hire his own legal counsel outside of that.
Let's let the lawyers settle this, okay? This is not the time for this. Commissioner, this is the time for the agenda and things related to the agenda.
I know it's hard for you to understand.
No, 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 no. It, it's very hard for you to understand. The lawyers will sort this out in court. You have sued the county on numerous occasions. This is just one of these.
Yeah. As I, as I was saying.
Again, I have nothing to add to that.
Retaining new counsel also, because your attorney sent me a text violating any ethics law, and it's with the State Supreme Court Ethics Board right now for the threatening texts that he sent me. So he may be removed from the case anyway. You may have to get your own counsel again. You'll be notified of that soon.
Okay, as I was saying, the, if, uh, if a commissioner wants to go rogue and violate a court order, then the Board of Commissioners should not be paying for that, and it also is a conflict of interest.
We're not even at that point.
Okay, it's gonna be this week filed, so I'm just letting you know.
When it's filed.
Yes, but you need to get your own counsel, because you're not going to use the taxpayers' money to defend your poor actions, because it's.
Make sure you're not getting some very preach legal stuff today.
Okay, uh, uh, mediation is confidential. Nothing about mediation is allowed to be discussed. The cases are allowed. Whatever, you know, but you're not allowed to just discuss anything that happened in mediation. It is an order, we were ordered by the judge not to discuss.
Right, and I didn't violate anything ordered by the old judge that it was under when we had that.
Really?
Really.
Okay.
Says nothing to do with county business. Let's move on.
Right. Ms. Taylor?
Um, thank you for hearing me out. Commissioner French.
Name, name.
Sarah Taylor, Towns Payable Clerk for Commissioners Office. Last week, hi, everybody on your show. Um, last week, I handed you two purchase orders that you didn't trust me to go make a copy for you. And you did not return. Can I expect them now? It's county property. It's not mine.
You take a recess while you go get her paperwork that she loaned you to make a copy of, that you promised you would give back in front of everybody, and even Ray Smith standing here at the time, you said you make a copy and you'll give it back. Trust me, I'll give it back. I wanna make my own copy. I'll give it back. Apparently, you either don't know how to make copies yet, or you just refuse to give it back to her. Can you give her her paperwork back? That's the one main copy that we have. Okay, can you go get it? Can we take a recess and you can go grab it?
No.
So she can have it?
Not gonna give it back. She's not gonna give it back, and that's okay. We'll, we'll recreate it. We've done a lot of that for you. And fundamentally, all of our parents have taught us, if you take something and don't return it, that's called stealing.
Okay.
It was a county document that she loaned you under the, the promises that you were gonna make a copy and give it right back to her. Everybody heard you say that, and you lied.
This is why no one can trust her. She does not do the taxpayers any bit of service. You run us all in circles.
I just want to make sure that she's taking her fifteen-minute breaks when she.
You, you are not.
You're doing her job, trying to recover county property.
You didn't return county property. You're a real piece of work. You really are.
You, you can't just keep playing this game every week, Commissioner. You got like twenty-eight weeks, twenty-eight more meetings we gotta put up with this. And every meeting, all you're doing again is playing the gotcha game. You didn't do this, I caught you doing this, you this. You're trying to bankrupt the county, you're trying to destroy the county. A good commissioner would say, what can we do today to make the county better? What can we do today to spend taxpayer dollars to make the county, make people happy? And what can we do to make a better quality of living?
You're cutting off.
That's what, that's what a good commissioner would do. You're, you're a bitter, spiteful commissioner that on the way out the door wants to burn the place down as you leave.
Okay.
Take your plants with you when you go, and don't burn the house down, and don't take any property with you that's not your property. Simple. It's simple. Anybody else have anything for the good on the phones? We're good? Okay, entertain that motion now, Morrow.
Make a motion, no turn.
I'll second that.
Mister Cantala Mesa.
Yes.
Mister Malloy.
Yes.
Ms. Frenchco.
Yes.